Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Wednesday, November 6th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. The Roval Hall, Councilmember Diamond.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Roval. Uh, Councilmember Mendel. Vice President Mendel.
President.
President Moore.
President.
Uh, let the record indicate the presence of Acting City Manager John Morando and Acting Corporation Councilman John Miskin. An absolute pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome into our City Council meeting on Wednesday, November 6th. At this time, we're going to have a special presentation. Uh, we're going to hear from John Dina, from Gallagher Associates, along with Howard Bittner, from New York State Comp Alliance. We're going to ask that you would just give them a warm welcome at this time. Now, going to ask the Council if they would kindly come down to the front at this time.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here this evening. So, I'm Andy Schandina with Arthur J. Gallagher, where the insurance brokers for the City of Long Beach. This is Howard Bittner. He's with the, uh, New York State Municipal Comp Alliance. The Comp Alliance handles the workers' compensation for the city. The Comp Alliance is, uh, sponsored by the New York Conference of Mayors and the New York State Association of Towns. So, we're here today to present a check to the city in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars of representing funds that the Comp Alliance is returning to its membership as part of the success that they have been having. And understand, these are fiscal strain for municipalities across the state or under. Uh, they've decided to, uh, return some of those proceeds that they've collected over the years back to their membership. So, Howard's going to present that check, uh, to the city.
On behalf of the City Council, we glad we received this award at this time. We thank, thank the New York State Comp Alliance, uh, for recognizing all of our efforts, uh, with respect to moving forward and making sure that our, our city, uh, has all the funds that it desperately need. And so, we accept this award at this time and we thank you for taking the time to come here and to present this award. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Big thank you to the Comp Alliance to make sure that we have a resolution drafted for the next meeting to accept the check. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll have a report from our Acting City Manager.
First, I'd like to commend all candidates for City Council who put themselves out there and saw the election to the council, as well as congratulate incoming City Councilmembers. Thank you to everyone who joined together with the city, county, and state officials, religious leaders from local congregation, and all the cause survivors for prayer, remembrance, and testimony this past Sunday at the sixth floor City Hall to commemorate the eighty-first year since Chris, Chris, this, all that. Excuse me, Chris will not. That little tough guy does. Uh, Monday, the manager is now meet the manager. Meet with the manager, an opportunity for residents to meet with the Acting City Manager without appointment, will now include opportunities from 4:30 to 6:30 before the second meeting of the City Council each month, generally through the third Tuesday. Schedule is as follows, through the end of the year, Monday, November 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Tuesday, November 19th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Monday, November 25th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Monday, December 2nd, from 2:00 to 4:00. And Monday, December 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Monday, December 16th, 2:00 to 4:00. Monday, December 23rd, 2:00 to 4:00. Tuesday, December 17th, from 4:30 to 6:30. And Monday, December 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00. Please note that the meet with the manager has a chance for Monday, November 11th, Veterans Day. Uh, meet with the manager will resume Monday, November 18th, from 2:00 to 4:00 at the City Manager's office on the fifth floor City Hall. Uh, we've had a pretty good flow of people coming in, so it's been very helpful. The Joint Veterans Organization, in cooperation with the City of Long Beach, will host the annual Veterans Day commemoration ceremony. This year's service will take place on Monday, November 11th at 10:30 AM inside City Hall on the sixth floor. The Veterans Day ceremony is the community's way to publicly thank the many veterans that have bravely served our country. A collation will be held at City Hall after the service. All are welcome to attend. In addition, City Hall and Magnolia Senior Center will be closed in observance of this holiday. Youth and Family Day Care, the Recreation Center, ice arena, Youth and Family Holiday Care will be open as well, with Long Beach buses operating on a holiday schedule. And East End sanitation pickup taking place after the normal schedule. The city's public court schools will be flushing hydrants from tonight, Wednesday, November 6th, to Wednesday, November 20th, between the hours of 9:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Hydrants are flushed to remove line deposits and sediment from the system. It also allows us to validate the agents of working properly. During this time, you may experience a low pressure or water discoloration, especially when flushing takes place in your neighborhood. When hydrants are opened to flush, the system line deposits can be removed by the high bottom of the water flowing through the pipes, resulting in a temporary and harmless discoloration of the water. The discoloration is from line, which is naturally present when water builds up deposits along the inside of our water pipes. During flushing, four modules will be raised in order to show safe water quality throughout the distribution system. It poses no threat to your health. You may choose not to drink the water during the flushing process. We suggest that you keep a pitcher of prewater in your refrigerator. Once the hydrant flushing is complete, the water quality will return to normal. Avoid doing laundry between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM. When hydrants are being flushed, run whole water to three minutes after flushing. Uh, hours to be sure your water is clear. If closed, become discolored, watch for the rust removal. For more information, visit www.longbeechny.com/hicalpworks. And Roval Hall went out tonight to all residents on that.
Good thank you once again, Acting City Manager John Morando. Just brief, a brief report from the Council. Just want to, once again, encourage all of you to participate in our annual Veterans Day celebration as previously stated at 10:30 AM on this Monday. Let's come out and let's, once again, recognize and, and just celebrate our veterans and their contributions to our local community. Uh, secondly, we'd like to inform you that last week, the firm, law firm of Hope and Level, uh, informed us that they would not be able to take the case with respect to responding to the audit response. On Monday, this Monday, November 4th, the conference call was held with Farrell and Fritz, the Farrell and Fritz legal firm. Due to the absorbent cost, as well as the time constraint, the council majority moved to accept a retainer from Ingerman Smith. Uh, as of six, sixteen this evening, uh, we, it was communicated by John Groves that the firm has already contacted the Comptroller's Office for a request for an extension with respect to the audit response. A special meeting of the City Council will be called this Friday, November 8th, at 7:30 AM. And now, on to the agenda.
Okay, first item is public hearing. For residents who grant the waiver of Long Beach local requirements of premise seventy-eight, please park the empty for a natural healing products retail store.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open the hearing. We'll hear from the National Healing Products Retail Store. Good evening, how are you? And welcome. Okay, can you just briefly tell us some information with respect to the nature of your business?
Sure. So, everything would be derivative form.
But how would we meet you? Would you use that microphone? If you just lift it a little bit, moving a little bit closer to the mic.
Is your thumb?
My sure thumb.
So, the nature of the business would be all about natural healing, what's the healing? Be natural pain, anti-anxiety, anti-inflammatory. Everything is based off of derivative, the hemp plant, which is a non-THC CD product. Uh, I'm sure a lot of you have heard about it. It's helping worldwide right now. So, that's what the store is going to be based on. Small retail store. It's going to have just, uh, packaged products, oil tinctures, uh, topical creams, beauty products that are all CBD infused.
Okay, and what are your hours of operation?
Uh, maybe six days a week, from 10:00 AM till 5:00 PM.
Okay, and once again, uh, the city is not at this time granting a bike ride, but are you interested in having a bike ride in front of your establishment?
No, not at the establishment.
Okay, and can you speak to the drop-off? Uh, at what times will the drop-offs take place? Would be any deliveries that will take place?
Uh, probably not that many, I don't know. I'm just, you know, I'm not angry myself, yes. Not, not a good deal, I, I trap, except as far as the reason.
All right, and the number of employees?
For now, it'll just be me. The homeowner, I'm the owner, I run the whole shop.
And also, we're, we're still moving forward in terms of, uh, really thinking about the environment and being environmentally active. Uh, are there any initiatives or anything that you plan to do as a new business owner in our city? Potential business owner in our city to respect the environment and to, uh, contribute to some of the environment sound.
Sure, so business owners that are in the area get 10% off anything that's in the store, any local business owner, as well as, it'll be a senior discount that's every single day. So, it'll be always available to the community, especially people that aren't. I'll be joining a lot of different programs, painting, wellness, discussion, things like that, and tell people that I have a whole field to offer.
Excellent. All right, at this time, I'll ask the Council, are there any questions at this time? Okay, at this time, we will open the floor to our public. Are there any questions with respect to the Natural Healing Products Retail Store? Okay, see, none of them wants to go ahead and close the hearing. Uh, we will, uh, under our vote shortly, so we'll ask you at this time, and you can sit down at this time.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Okay, on to the regular calendar. I want a resolution for anything we have a long street requirement for premise seventy-eight, you spoke damn true for a natural healing products retail store. Hearing has been held on this item already. I'm in terms of resolution authorized by the Acting City Manager to turn to a software agreement for the city's tax assessor office.
Okay, we'll hear from our City Manager. And then, oh, okay, I'm going to recognize a tax assessor. Pretty clever. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, as we discussed at the capital budget hearing, the assessment, the administrative, uh, software is, uh, coming out to lead and speed upgrade. Uh, this contract is to upgrade the software with our current software provider, who also provides much of the software on the third floor, including the building, tax, water sewer, and ours in our office. Uh, the contract is for the upgrade and the maintenance for three years. I have Alex Ng, the Vice President of Operations of SCA, the software provider here. Do you have any questions ahead?
Okay, are there any questions from the Council?
Just one good question. Um, in the resolution, it says funds, uh, thirty-four thousand will become available. Though I assume that means this isn't the capital plan?
Yes, in the capital budget, so that'd be part of it.
Okay, um, thank you.
All right, at this time, are there any questions from members of the public with respect to item number two? Okay, yes, just a question.
You didn't mean more than that. Um, this particular software, that was designed strictly for the city.
Okay.
Uh, it was, uh, developed back in the early nineties for, uh, the.
It was a, originally it was designed, it was a cooperative agreement between us, the, um, town of Mount Pleasant, and the village of, uh, the town of Brown Cove. We got together and, um, we were having problems with the software that was provided by the state. It wasn't being, it was not doing what we needed. We wanted the force that we needed. It, it was very limited in capabilities. We cooperatively went together, together to have the software developed. Uh, and now, it's offered as a, uh, as a package to other municipalities besides the three that started.
But this company only has a hundred customers?
Uh, the company has about two hundred customers here, including, um, municipal, uh, building, software, the water, the assessment, and the tax firm.
And when was it developed?
The original version, uh, developed in the late nineties or eighties.
So, we've had the same software for over twenty years? And we haven't upgraded it?
Yes, most of it.
Okay, and what had we looked at other software developers? Because the other people that provide the programs that have a lot more than hundred customers.
Uh, colleagues of mine in various other municipalities that quotes from other companies that have to develop it from New York State, uh, New York State has specific laws that the software has to meet, and the costs involved were, like, over two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand, and some close to, if you wanted to do the entire software suite, uh, which is building, tax, you're talking close, more close to a million dollars for the software maintenance.
How many variables are in the state case? What we are talking about, we're talking about awesome information, inventory, sales case. It doesn't seem like a lot of variables.
There's a lot.
To include that, there's exemptions, it's, uh, transferred to our tax department, I think, New York State law, mailing out tax bills, and converting reports to New York State officer of property tax services also.
All right, so it's my understanding that, in other words, this is going to allow, um, the operations to actually function, and that is the purpose of moving forward with this data upgrade.
Well, that would be the purpose of any software, in a sense, to allow it to actually function.
Absolutely, but you're not listening to what I just said. I'm talking about the tendering the operations of the actual office.
Yes, that would be the purpose of any software. Um, my question is, we're upgrading it, and yet, immediately, we have to be upgrading it to thirty-four thousand dollars, which I find a lot of money to upgrade it in a piece of software. And then, they're paying another twelve thousand a year for the next three years. It just seems, I, I don't know, you know, I'm assuming you guys did, you did diligence. It just seems to me like a lot of money for a piece of software, but that doesn't seem to be that complicated. Now, the other question is, since Nassau County is already doing all of this, why wouldn't they use their software and put in their own batteries?
I approached the assessor in Nassau County, and it was a little complicated. I didn't get a straight answer on it. And kind of the software doesn't communicate without software, so we have to develop some sort of bridge program, uh, transfer building permits, transfer asset rolls, tax department. So, we create work, or we have to develop, uh, some sort of bridge program. We also have to hire consultants to convert all of our data. So, we had our, uh, structural data. So, that's a, that's a huge cost that we went with another software, uh, we had to convert data and have bridge programs connecting our data.
But, to be honest, this is, this company, this is proprietary to this company. And if this company goes out of business, where's food, aren't we?
Okay, I want to write something. Please come on up.
Uh, hi, I'm Alex Ng, the Vice President of Operations for Software Consulting Association. We have been with this for thirty-five years, and we plan to continue to do this for even more years. We do have, uh, not almost all of our, uh, clients are in New York, and have been, especially the assessment system, has been developed for the unique and somewhat complicated rules of New York assessing. So, when we're talking about this upgrade, regarding from DBase to SQL to a web-based program, that will include all of the functionality of the old program, including all the different modules, such as Defender, which allows you to make comparables and defend your assessments, handling co-ops, and all of the things that make it very difficult to use the state program.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. Why is it difficult to use the state program? New York State is using their, their program, and Long Beach is more complicated than New York State and New York City.
He can give you, I'm sure he can.
The New York State's software, uh, many of my clients, no one in New York is doing it. The state takes ownership of your data, so if you have a problem with your software, you have to call all the name and then send the, update them for a price of it, and they do not answer to you. Uh, like a software provider would call them. They want their check to him to fix the problem. Uh, many of these towns downstate don't use the state's software.
But it's private.
Uh, Nassau County uses it, although it's not a sweet for Long Beach and for that. Uh, the Grand City just, we're living upgraded, and they're spending quite a few hundred thousands of dollars for all their software, rebuilding to, uh, their finances, to their assessment software. It's just expensive, you have to hire consultants to convert the data.
So, if you know, if this data doesn't convert easily?
Uh, it's, it may have to, yeah. It doesn't, it's, it's difficult. I've been involved.
You understand my concern.
Okay, one second, thank you.
I've been involved in the data conversion with the county when the, uh, did the initial reassessment back in two thousand and two. It was, it was a lot of work to convert that data to different databases. It took me a while, and it didn't come out too well sometimes.
Yeah, all right, so my concern is having a proprietary software that doesn't convert easily to what other people are using.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I, I assume we're not in business, we're not in business. I'm hoping you're in a dangerous, and I just don't want to put the city in a position where we have one vendor that can't be converted easily.
Understood. Are there any other questions from the public? If see none, we'll move on to the next side.
I agree with resolution authorized by the Acting City Manager to amend the agreement on replacement legislation on a pump and well number sixteen at the water purification plant and transport pumps.
Okay, uh, well sixteen, we, uh, had to put out a contract to replace the pump, the existing pump that went, went out as a useful item. Uh, was not running properly. Uh, so, we were replacing a, the base mercible pump. Uh, when that contract started, the pump went in, and we started to pull mud from the well. Uh, we then went and TV'd the well, and we found is that the riser pipe on the screen had failed and collapsed into the screen. So, what we now need to do is to actually clean out the screen, pull out the existing riser pipe, put in a new riser pipe or sleeve to prevent the, the sand from coming into the well, and then reinstall the pump.
Okay, at this time, are there any questions from members of the Council? You see, none. Are there questions from members of the public? One? All right, so one up this morning.
Wait, listen, Long Beach. This is a new pump. How much was the pump?
The, the pump project was, uh, just a little over a hundred thousand dollars to be done with.
I'm just talking about the pump.
The pump portion of it, I'd have to look at the bid, but the entire project, the purchasing of the pump, installing the pump, uh, and in addition, there was some other work we had to do with the wellhouse. Uh, when you replace wells now, you have to replace the sanitary steel at a height that's above the, uh, base plate elevation.
I'm suggesting the pump.
Well, like, you can't, I would love to give you that answer, but it's all a complicity. You just can't replace the pump without doing all this other work, right?
Okay. So, I mean, this is?
This, this was based on a bid, it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars, and that included to redo the well to be, to meet the base elevation for the steel and to install the new pump and to rework the pipe work that, that needed to do. So, it was all one pump sum bid.
And when we buy these pumps, there's no guarantee on that?
There's, there's nothing wrong with the pump. The, the riser pump, the riser pipe within the well, okay, the well's fourteen hundred feet deep. The pump itself is set at about a hundred and fifty feet into the well. Okay? The riser pipe sits on top of the screen at the bottom of this fourteen hundred foot deep casing, which allows the water to flow into the well. The riser pipe collapsed into the screen, which allowed materials from the ground or the, the afterward around it to fill the screen and start pumping up to the pump. There's nothing wrong with the pump. We need to replace the riser pipe and reinstall the pump that we already have.
Well, when it says indicating, uh, indicating a possible void indication, we're talking about the pump casing or the riser casing?
We're talking about the riser, the inside casing of the, of the well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions with respect to item number three? If see none, we will move on to item number four.
Finally, item four is resolution authorized by the Acting City Manager to make payment for Long Beach Local Adult Corporation.
Okay, we've, uh, at the last meeting, we, uh, had a resolution to wire in the auditors. Uh, ABC, who was our previous auditor, has work papers that belong to the, uh, that they done for LCD that belong to ABC. Under county rules, we need to get those work payers' papers. The LCD doesn't have enough money to pay ABC for their audit of the LCD, or the LDC, and therefore, uh, the city needs to pay that so that we can move on with our audit and get all the work papers for our audit. Uh, and that's basically it.
Okay, are there any questions at this time from members of the Council? Okay, at this time, we'll open up and ask if there are any questions from members of the public. See, I recognize those questions.
Good evening, Liz.
Hiya. I just wanted to recognize Heidi Long, maybe if she can help answer the question regarding the LDC. Because I remember a few months ago that everyone authorized twenty thousand dollars for loss services, but no one knew what the LDC did. And now, we're safely, just me, as a resident, that one company is holding another company hostage for some money. You know, that's not the way it is, but that's just the issue.
Okay, Heidi Moore? Oh, okay, I recognize the comptroller as well, the resident. Is Heidi going to come up at this time? And is it still existent, or, or is it?
Good evening, um, how are you? I just want to, um, I just want to clarify something about, about.
Just walk in.
Um, about holding hostage. Uh, there's some very strict rules that are prescribed for the, um, profession of independent audit and auditors who have not received their fee for prior audit. audit and auditors who have not received their fee for prior, prior audit. Um, they lose their, I say their first, and they go, which I appreciate. So they can do various, got the whole LDC, I mean, the free money.
Right, so that would be, yeah, you might speak to them, Patty Moore?
Exactly, because it's not on the agenda.
No, so, i- if I can just go into that for, for a minute. I think, uh, obviously the LDC was formed, uh, just a little bit before I came to inform the city, but I think the LDC was contemplated at the time, uh, when the city was considering some big, big projects like the Super Block. Um, obviously that didn't materialize in the way that it was anticipated. And right now, we have this LDC that has all these expenses and no income flowing in because it's doing no work. And the problem is, you know, for a smaller development, let's say fifteen or twenty residential units, the transaction costs of the LDC don't allow that entity to see a benefit that the LDC could provide. It's really only designed for bigger projects, which we don't really have going on. Um, so that's why we've begun to look, look into dissolution of the LDC. Uh, we realize that this is an expense, um, so we're looking into dissolving it and based on our preliminary look, uh, we have to follow the same formalities in dissolving it as we did in creating. So we're gonna be looking into that very shortly and, you know, it's going to cost some more money to dissolve it, but once it's dissolved, uh, we...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You remember, I guess it was around a year ago, maybe a little bit longer, when we were, uh, owing for the money for the LDC, for the, to represent them and the I-STAR, that it came to our attention that LDC, that the board had voted to dissolve.
Yes.
And now we're talking over a year later, more expenses, and they, you're looking into dissolving it. Why? Why they voted to dissolve? And the excuse at that time was, well, there's the lawsuit, so, you know, we, we have to take care of the lawsuit, which was taken care of, and they still haven't been allowed to dissolve, and now we have more expenses.
The lawsuit's still pending.
And you're telling me that they can't dissolve like the lawsuit's pending?
I'm not telling you that. I'm just saying the lawsuit's still pending.
Okay. So why aren't they dissolving? Why are we getting heavy more expenses?
You know, I, you said they voted to dissolve it. I'm not sure that there's been a resolution passed by the LDC board to the...
Well, that's what we were told.
Uh, maybe our executive director shed some light on that.
Good evening. Good evening, Patty Moore. At the time of the lawsuit and, uh, the resolution by the city council, as Mr. Lester mentioned, we, uh, were, we, um, recommended not to dissolve the LDC while the lawsuit was active. And the board of the LDC discussed it, but not take, did not take the action to actually, uh, pass a resolution to submit to the city council and to the manager to dissolve at that time. They were concerned about it and, as Greg said, were looking into it, but did not do it at that time. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you. So, when you say you're looking into it, what does that mean?
That means, uh, analyzing how much it's going to cost, analyzing the anticipated legal fees, and asking about the process of dissolving it. We don't even have a resolution to dissolve it, but I thought we would at least start out on the information that we need to dissolve it when the resolution line is passed.
But nobody knows how much it would cost to dissolve. My understanding is it's a relatively simple thing to dissolve.
If you would like, if you would like to offer your services to dissolve it, we can talk after the meeting, Mr. Moore.
Okay. Then it'll get done. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nora Eaton?
Nora Eaton, um, so as of July twenty-four, two thousand and eighteen, the corporation didn't have a formal agreement with the city. Have they since made a formal agreement with the city?
I'm just a little bit...
So the corporation does not have a corp, a, a formal agreement with the, with the city of Long Beach and the corporation were guarding the corporation's use of city personnel and office space. So are we using office space for the LDC, um, city personnel?
Well, the executive director of the LDC is also a city employee. I'm not sure what you're asking.
So, well, I just, I'm confused about this letter that I just signed from ABC from two thousand and eighteen. If we have no agreement with them, why did we give, um, twenty-five thousand dollars for our legal fees and why are we giving, um, twenty-five hundred now?
I mean, I think a lot of that is explained in the whereas clauses, that there are certain ethical rules that the councils must follow, and they're not gonna turn over the city's audit files to our auditors unless all the invoices are cleared.
Okay, so then, this is from two thousand and eighteen, so there should be, uh, a standard for two thousand and nineteen for...
I'm, I'm not sure what we're looking at, so I can't comment. I think, uh, our comptroller wants to do that.
So, our LDC's fiscal year is different from the city's fiscal year, their fiscal year, and December thirty-first. And what is, that we're talking about is the December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen audit that was incorporated into the, um, June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen financial statements from the city. That problem addresses part of your question, you said there will be more, yes, there will be more, they were, they were in the December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, right? That's the year that typically the group is going to audit now for the inclusion, gonna be a group for new auditors, are gonna audit LDC's financials for the fiscal year and the December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. And, uh, there's still an existence. Now, it's a problem will begin December, so would please forward that to eighteen?
Eighteen, nineteen. So you said twenty eighteen and nineteen?
Yeah.
Private conversation.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, before we recognize Patty Moore once again.
You know, it's a regret that, uh, the LDC has not done projects, but as Greg mentioned, they just haven't been appropriate. The LDC was created before I started working for the city. But I did want to mention, which we've talked about before, that the LDC has brought in, it's because besides being an development, economic development corporation, it's also a nonprofit, five-one-on-C-three with treasury recognition. Therefore, we've been able to bring in, uh, since inception, about two hundred thousand dollars. We average between six and ten thousand dollars per year at this time. Small amounts now, we brought in a lot more right after standing. Uh, the use of these funds typically are for programs to support economic development and the promotion of the city. They cannot be typically used for administrative costs. That's why we have this expense tonight for the cost for the audits, because the funds we brought in could not be used for that though.
Thank you.
Patty, quick up, just one quick question. Um, so when we apply for grants or whatever, it's complete streets or any kind of municipal improvement in downtown Brooklyn, if the grant applications were going from the LDC rather than the city, is there any weight difference given in consideration whether it's coming from the LDC or, or the city?
No, I don't think so. Some grants, uh, are only eligible for municipalities such as the city. Some grants are only eligible for five-one-on-C-three, such as new foundations, PSCG Foundation, City Bank Foundation, other bank foundations, the way they're, uh, needed, cannot give money directly to municipality, therefore, we go through the, um, LDC for economic development purposes.
Okay, and it just sounds like they haven't even proacted in that area.
Well, we've tried and, uh, some of the, um, grant boards were very supportive after standing, but have moved on to support other disaster areas. Uh, we, we, I've talked to, to be honest, every bank in Long Beach in the last couple of years, trying to pull money and, or, as well as, of course, other...
Thank you. At this time, only one, oh, Mr. Jim Perklin?
Good evening. Jim Perklin, Long Beach, New York. Um, I wanted to know what, what are the track protections of the IDC if they needed to borrow money?
The expenses for the LDC are twofold. One, minimal expenses on the whole for our attorney fees, uh, we have a separate attorney, and the required audit that is, uh, required under New York State Public Authority's law, is specifically wired for certain kinds of audit and for responding to the state requirements. Those are the only two costs we have at this time.
Thank you.
Are they considered ongoing, you know, continuous costs or just periodic?
Uh, well, uh, we try to minimize the attorney costs if we can, but the audit, uh, has to be done, uh, for each year as Ed explained. So it's an annual cost. What do you want?
So they share only the one time request, but...
Well, as Ed explained, until we dissolve it, if that decision is made...
No, maybe not once a year.
Once a year, exactly, yes. Annual.
Thank you. All right. Mike Laurie?
Good evening, Council Mike Laurie. Um, the last time I remember this conversation, uh, Scott Barnes was the president of this LDC corporation. I remember the conversation was primarily, at that point, it was twenty-five thousand dollars that had to be moved over from the, uh, general fund to the, to this entity. One of the primary expenses of this corporation, legal fees, and if so, is it roughly twenty-some thousand dollars per year? Uh, I don't know if you can answer that. Um, the second question is, can new board members be assigned to this because of litigation, it has to wait until this is resolved?
The twenty-five thousand dollars which the city council approved was put into a separate fund to pay for the lawsuit with I-STAR, and it was an interest account, which Greg explained, he explained legal issues. And we, what we did was we created a totally separate account, and that account was where we deposited twenty-five thousand dollars to be used only for legal expenses regarding the I-STAR litigation. In regard, do you have any sort of question? Regarding the board, we have a five-member board, and right now, we have five members. Um, they serve at the pleasure of the city and, uh, one were to resign. We have an opening for, as of this moment, we do not have an opening.
Can you just, can you, Mike, also, the, those individuals or the streamer, can hear your question?
Is it the city council or the city manager that, um, at the pleasure of the board? I just need a clarification of how, if a member or director wanted to resign or be replaced, how would that process begin? Thank you.
The, um, LDC has a member which is the city manager, and I wasn't here when they were appointed, but, and I can check it to be sure, but it's my impression that the city manager appoints the members to the LDC board, but I can check that in the back seat.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else at this time? All right, so if there's anything we want to, we jump.
On to the voting, please. So item one is resolution breaking labor Washington requirements, primary seventy-eight East Parkway, and we're natural dealing products retailers. She's moving out from this side.
I will.
Laurie, have a good night. Yes.
Yes. Yes, good luck. Welcome to the neighborhood and good luck, yes.
Congratulations, welcome. Then I will guess.
I am here as a resolution authorizing the Acton City Manager to enter a software agreement for the city's tax assessment office. She's moving out from this side.
I will. I will.
Laurie, have a good night.
Yes.
Have a good one.
Yes.
Have a good day.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
I agree as resolution authorizing the Acton City Manager to amend the agreement for replacement and installation of a pump at well number sixteen at the water purification plant and to transfer funds. She's moving out from this side.
Who?
Second?
I will.
Laurie, have a good night.
Yes.
Have a good one.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
Finally, I endorse resolution authorizing the Acton City Manager to make a payment for the Long Beach Local Adult Corporation. She's moving out from this side. Second?
I will.
Laurie, have a good night.
Yes.
Have a good one.
Yes.
Have a good day.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
City manager, multi-personal report, has been filed by the city court and made motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Okay, have a good night.
Yes.
Have a good one.
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes.
President Moore?
Yes. Yes. And now, want to go to welcome portion of our meeting. Before I begin to read the names this evening, I'm going to ask our Acton City Manager to just provide some information with respect to some of the questions that were raised during the previous meeting.
Okay, first item was, uh, about the water rates and what the impact was. Uh, so, the water rates last year were raised two percent in every, uh, block rate. Uh, we have block rates that go from zero to twelve thousand gallons used, which was the minimum charge. Last year was four forty-one per thousand, went to four fifty, four dollars and fifty cents per thousand. The next block goes from twelve thousand gallons used to a hundred and fifty thousand gallons used in three-month period. That went from four dollars and seventy-two cents to four dollars and eighty-one cents. Uh, the block, next block rate is a hundred and fifty thousand gallons to three hundred thousand gallons. That went from four dollars and seventy-nine cents a thousand to four dollars and eighty-nine cents. Three hundred thousand to six hundred thousand gallons of the next block. That went for five dollars and one cent to five dollars and eleven cents, and six hundred thousand of both went from five dollars and fifty cents to five dollars and sixty-one cents. Therefore, minimum total bill, if you use the minimum amount of water in a quarter of twelve thousand or less, your minimum bill increased by a dollar and eight cents. If someone used a hundred and fifty thousand gallons in a quarter, that's sixteen hundred sixty gallons a day, the bill would increase in that quarter by thirteen dollars and fifty cents. Second item was asked about the, uh, whether LBGT stole the city money. I believe that they were paid, uh, we were paid for last year's LBGT event. We have billed them for this year's LBGT event that no discount. Uh, as soon as they get their grant, they will be paying us. So that's the way it worked last year, too. They're generally just about a year behind in paying us, cause they wait for the grant that comes into Nassau County. And the last item was somebody had raised a question about employees' children going to the daycare center for free. There are no children of employees that are going for free. We do have four, uh, people, not, two that are not employees, uh, that do owe money, and they have been sent to Dunning notice.
All right, thank you. At this time, we recognize, as was Lester's... At this time, we recognize, as always, we should call Laurie.
I've never been first. You should put it on the bottom. Um, the, you know, I'm here with the IDC in the sense that you are hiring, uh, an attorney to address this, and I don't think it will be any problem to get the adjournment. But the, the question is, and, and, you know, it's been going back and forth, do we really need to answer this? Uh, legally, I, as I understand and the research seems to show, we were asked to answer it, but is there a legal obligation to answer? Not to get rid of the answer that we already have, that's a different story. But is there a legal obligation to answer the audit?
I can answer that. No, there's no legal obligation to answer the audit. Um, if you don't answer, you know, the audit becomes final, as is, and then you can work on a corrective action plan, but it's not easy to do that.
But don't we have to do that anyway? I mean, the audit basically tells us what, what we did wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the audit isn't mandating anything. They're saying, hey, you guys, you can improve by doing this. This is where you ran into the problems, these, you know. I, I mean, why do we need to hire an additional attorney to respond to suggestions?
I think you should ask other members of the council. I, I brought that forward some time ago.
You might be right in this, and that's why I want to get your attention.
I, I've listened to other people. I've listened to those individuals who are, uh, uh, specialized in being, I guess what we want to call it, accountant, torrentive accountant. And I was told that we could simply accept the findings and then move forward with the corrective action. But that's what I was told. But, um, we're here now, we're moving forward. A special meeting will be called on Friday.
But, and listen, what I'm asking is, is there, and I guess I'm asking the entire council, is there a necessity to hire another attorney for this?
So first of all, that question was already answered because apparently the attorney was already hired to do this, so.
Not for this. It was hired looking to the criminal aspects of it.
Well, he was also directed to do this as well.
Not what the remainder says.
I can't split that to you. I'm not debating you. I'm just telling you what has happened.
Okay.
Um, what I can tell you, you're a litigator. Would you ever not put in a response when you had the opportunity to?
If it's a suggestion, probably not, because I'd probably not want to. You know, the more you say, the more they can hold you to it. So, you know, I probably, if it's just suggestions and there's nothing requiring me, sometimes the less said, the better. I'm just, you know what, I'm confused, and that's why I'm asking. Because I understood that we were mandated. And I think a lot of other people understood that, too. That, you know, they, because they said we want an answer, that we were mandated. And now it turns out that we're not.
I can address that?
Yes.
Sure, the same feelings you do. This whole thing was done under a shroud of secrecy. Keep in mind, you know, council members were excluded from this. The only thing we know is there was an attorney who was retained for one scope of work.
Yes.
That attorney's scope was greatly expanded, and he did something else, and he drafted and with help of others, yeah, put in a response. I can't go by that response, and I need, you can always speak for me. Fresh advise and independent advise, protect the city, to review that response, review what the audit was, and to guide us. I'm an attorney, but I'm not that attorney. So if you're asking my opinion, yes, we do need an independent attorney to come in, guide the city, this is crucial. This isn't time to, um, split hairs and, you know, wax poetic, should we, should we not. It's already been done, and we're the first ones.
Scott, you're talking about bringing in an expert to tell us what's right and wrong. That's different than putting in an answer. And I think what you guys did by rejecting the answer that was put in by somebody you did not hire and you didn't even know about, and you paid over a hundred thousand dollars for, I, I think that was absolutely the correct thing to do. But my question is, hey, looking at the entire audit, of course you want experts to look at it. Of course you want them to say, hey, this is what you can do. But putting in the answer is what I guess I'm, I'm asking.
And how to see what, if you take experts' thoughts.
Okay.
Then also, the point is, what you're saying is maybe that will wind up being, it's possible that will wind up being the answer, but that's why we need legal counsel to tell us that.
Okay.
The, the council members, quite frankly, were the only ones in this whole process that weren't, did not have legal counsel to consult with.
The public.
So. And, and, and some conversations with some of the law firms we've talked with, they said, you guys need a lawyer.
Everyone needs a lawyer.
Definitely.
Eileen Hush in Long Beach. Maybe this was just answered. Was he talking about Capizola?
Which town?
The lawyer that was hired?
Yes.
Mr. Capizola?
Yes.
All right, so is he still working for the city of Long Beach?
Yes.
Why?
Because there's various investigations that he was retained to assist as well.
So we're still paying him? I disagree. Thank you.
Okay. Laura Egan?
Hi.
All right.
James Odd, ninety-five, East Fulton Street, Long Beach, New York. Just want to say, uh, hello to the fine, uh, deliveries, always sergeant and great. Uh, thank God for the work that they do on our city and voluntary. I was, uh, fortunate to be one for several years, so thank God for the work they do. Uh, I'm standing to say, I would like to thank, uh, congratulate all of those this past election, all of those that, uh, won their election, and all of those that fought a good race and just came up a little short. Thank you for even throwing your name in the hat. Uh, to run, I want to say again, thank God for everybody's story and everybody's history. Uh, I've been coming here for many years, and I thank God for the opportunity for, uh, what you have been able to do, Lisa, President Moore. Thank you for, uh, inspiring all of the young African-American children that may have never thought it was possible, but able to see that it could happen. Thank you for, uh, letting our ancestors that looked down and fought so hard several times and came up short, on others, they smiled down, you made history. Thank God for your story, just like we thank God for everyone's story and celebrate. This is something that can never be taken away from the history books of the city of Long Beach. Uh, thank God for what you've been able to do with other council members, but what you've been able to do as a person, what you still continue to do. For our whole city, not just African-Americans, but you've done something enlightening for African-Americans in them believing, just like Obama did, and just like Shirley Chisholm said. She said, you know, you don't make progress by standing on a sound line and whimpering and complaining. You make progress by implementing ideas. And she was the first African-American congresswoman. And you, uh, you got in, and you two here, naming a hat. Just like those elected officials that are coming in, they're going to see that it's, it's not an easy thing. It's hard. It's hard making decisions. Some people get in with a lot of ideas, and some things are not as easy as it appears to be. So again, I just want to say that I'm praying always for our city in our, in, in my forty years of living, and been in politics since, uh, fourteen years old. Uh, I thank you again. Thank all of you, as I continue to pray for all of our council members that we will continue to do what we can to make this a better city for all of the residents here and all of the residents and people to come in the future. God bless. Thank you.
Sure, thank you so very much, you stay.
I just have a quick, couple of follow-up questions for, for our acting city manager. The, the solid waste treatment, uh, program that we presented a couple of weeks ago, the draft date is due tomorrow. You didn't mention anything about that, you're probably mistaken. Can you just give us a brief synopsis so people at home know where, that their opinions still matter?
Sure, I'm going to ask, uh, the deputy commissioner to come up and go over those dates. He'll have pride in the tip of his thumb. I don't know about that.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening.
Yes, the comment period for the draft for the solid waste management plan, uh, ends tomorrow. You are correct. Um, the next phase is, uh, we'll incorporate any comments we received after meeting, um, and as well as any other comments we received into that draft, um, plan, and then I will submit it to the city.
And we know the turnaround for the CDC because it's a ten-year program.
Hopefully faster than the last one.
Yeah, the last one was many years. Hopefully this one doesn't much.
And is there anything as residents that we can do to assist you in making it go better?
I think at this point, we pretty much have it in place as well. Um, I think we're at the final stages of this.
Just a second for two, I'll get to the question. We had just, or before this meeting, there was a meeting about the CRF, which is important for our community. And if you could just briefly go over that, because I know that we'll be having another meeting for that as well, so people will know.
Yeah, um, CRF stands for Community Rating System. Um, in the city of Long Beach, the residents enjoy a fifty percent reduction in their flood insurance premiums, um, as because of our participation in this program. Um, basically, in August of this year, I received a call from the insurance ops, uh, insurance services, which was basically saying that the Nassau County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that we use as a prerequisite for participation in the CRF program had expired. So we can no longer use it as a prerequisite, um, for the program. So basically, what would happen at the end of this year would be dropped from the program. So residents will walk that, a percent reduction. So what we, what we did was we put out a press proposal, directed to a turnaround time, and we ended up hiring PetroTech to prepare a flood, uh, flood.
Flood management.
Flood management, uh, flood management plan for the city of Long Beach, which still serves as a prerequisite for participation in the program. So we have a very, uh, an expedited schedule that we've been working through since, since August. Uh, and then we had actually a public, a committee meeting tonight, or we had a public meeting tonight. We had a public meeting on the block, which we did. We have to maybe keep that on, and we had it too early, which we all want to change the next morning. We have a little later to accommodate, um, the residents, um, probably have that necessary, except for a clock. But we did have active day today, then we need to three o'clock, then we need to five o'clock, and we have chats and meetings, and we don't want to. We will, we will change the times to accommodate, um, and hopefully have that participation because in the, um, in public, we only have that type of people. So we'd like to get a better representation.
And just one last question regarding Capizola. Can you pronounce the name, please?
Capizola.
Mr. Capizola, is it, he is still being retained for whom?
He represents the city in iris investigations.
Can we elaborate on that at all?
Uh, because of the nature of what you worked on? No, I can't, I'm sorry.
Thank you, very appreciated. Thank you. At this time, we'll hear from Catherine O'Leary.
Hi, Catherine O'Leary, Long Beach. Uh, first, I'd like to say that the answer to the questions answered from the previous meeting is extremely helpful, and I think it is easier to focus on the best time. And it's, it's very all right, but I have this exception, is it? Thank you for the feedback, yeah. Um, I would like to request that, uh, you know, I, I watched the election last night, and Glenn Cole just elected a new mayor and was done with it. Um, we've been playing around with the city manager stuff for literally years. And, um, I would like to suggest, uh, that we give until the end of the year to hire a permanent city manager. And if that, if that city manager is not at his desk or her desk the first of the year, that, uh, a resolution be added to the city council meeting to postpone the election, to elect a mayor and amend the, um, city charter.
To, to change the mayoral system would require a referendum. Because there's one in, what, two thousand and eight or seven? Right, two thousand and seven, they, they had one, and it was voted down.
Okay.
I believe there was one earlier than that.
So it's twenty nineteen, that's twelve years ago.
Okay, but I'm just saying, it's, it's not as simple as just the city council resident. It would take a referendum of the entire city, you know, of all, of the population.
Would that be in the twenty-twenty election?
We, I don't know.
Depends on the timing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Depends on the timing, I mean, it's not just a simple, um, one, two, three.
No, I get it. I get it. But, you know, I, I often find that when it's in the city's advantage, it's very easy to change a charter, but when it's in the residents' advantage, it becomes very hard and expensive. So I'm thinking that if we could draw the line to the first of the year and just say, okay, city manager search is over, let's get cracking on putting it before the city council. Let's get cracking on, um, making a resolution on November twenty-twenty presidential election ballot.
Thank you. This concludes our meeting. We want to once again recognize all of our Long Beach community police. We thank you for your service. We thank all of you for taking the time to come out to this meeting.
Okay, Dan, I know, yeah.
Yeah, I work at the Baptist church.
Okay.